...about the policies of hospitals when I represent a community that does not even have a hospital. The Martin Luther King Junior Hospital closed down and has never reopened. And that's the issue I want the county to really be working on. Hopefully they'll take the energy and not fight this ordinance, but will put all their energy into reopening a hospital that is so desperately needed in the community of Watts. But I do want to say, um, the idea of bringing forth a person in the city of Los Angeles to be our healthcare liaison between the county, I think is critical. And I think it is important on so many issues, not just this one, but in how the county dispenses healthcare to the people that we represent. It's not the county versus the city. We all represent the same people and it is our obligation to protect their health and protect their safety as much as it is the county. Let's use this as an opportunity to have a better working relationship with the county.
Councilmember Perry gives some final comments before the vote.
Uh, the only reason we're here is because people have been dumped on the street. That's the whole hard facts. Um, the Ad-Hoc Committee stands with the city attorney in support of this new ordinance just to close and to remind you, the misdemeanor provision, the operative word is "could." It gives the city attorney more teeth and more tools in the toolbox to work with. So I ask you to do the same in supporting this ordinance as it is written and, uh, call a question.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, for your leadership on this issue. And with that, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Twelve ayes, one no. Thank you. That item has been approved.
And joining us now by phone is the Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Homelessness, Jan Perry. Ms. Perry, welcome to Council Week in Review.
Thank you very much.
Patient dumping sounds wrong, it certainly is wrong, but hospitals and health agencies are doing just that. It has not been up till now illegal, has it been?
It's never been legal. Um, it has always been illegal and it, it deals directly with, uh, hospital or healthcare providers discharge protocols, uh, which were not working. Um, that's why we were having people dumped in Skid Row. I mean, for years, hospital patient dumping has been kind of a habit in this region and then Skid Row's been seen as a solution because it's an area rich in services. But when you leave people to fend for themselves and they're not able to do so, especially in an area like Skid Row, uh, it can be very dangerous for people who are patients and still need care. Now, many agencies, I have to say, many agencies do in fact take patients from hospitals and clinics and they do make accommodations for them. But the patients we're concerned about are people like Carol Ann Reyes, the elderly, frail, sick, and have mental illness. Those kinds of patients require a discharge plan that takes their very specific factors into consideration. And the new ordinance requires such a plan and is already a requirement of state law. Now, our ordinance, all this requires is that a hospital get a patient's written consent before transporting that patient. That's it. Get the consent, you can take the patient anywhere. If they get the consent, then they can't get prosecuted. This is called informed, signed consent. Now, if the patient can't provide that because of their, uh, mental illness or their other infirmities, then we believe that they are entitled to a better plan for placement where their needs will be met.
Of course, last year, that was that awful, there was that awful example of a man, I believe, who was dropped off on the sidewalk-
Oh, God.
-who not only couldn't sign, he couldn't walk. He had limb issues-
Couldn't walk and he had on a colostomy bag.
Right.
That was horrible. So this new ordinance provides the city attorney with the option that he could file misdemeanor charges against a hospital.
Well, if the hospitals are saying that they would only be charged with a misdemeanor crime, which patient dumping would now become, they could lose federal funding as we understood from the discussion.
That is their interpretation of the law and the city attorney disputes that interpretation. The issue that they are raising is one of a misdemeanor conviction. City attorney believes that, uh, that issue impacting federal funding through an exclusion clause does not apply to a local municipal ordinance. And in the interpretation of the city attorney, it appears that it would only apply to convictions under federal or state law.
There have been some examples where the city council has not been comfortable with the position that the city attorney has given to you. Is this an opportunity that you might want to take to consult outside counsel?
No, absolutely not. I mean, I think we were in sync. Uh, as you know, the first vote was 12 to 1. There was 12 people who voted yes and only one person who voted no.
No, I understand. I meant in order to make sure that you're, you're on the solid ground as you believe you are.
No, no, they've been working on this for two years.
Oh, okay.
You know, it's not, this is not an overnight ordinance. This is, and an ordinance based on lots and lots of casework, lots of outreach, uh, to the hospital association, uh, and they, they actually filed a case against Kaiser and Kaiser has revised and updated their discharge protocols and they're already operating, uh, in a manner which would be construed as inconformant with this ordinance, even though the ordinance had not even been adopted yet.
Well, if Jan Perry is comfortable with it, then I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah.
Obviously, the expert. What's the advantage to hospitals dumping patients? Is some sort of cost savings-
I can't imagine. I, I couldn't answer that question. I don't know, other than maybe due to a bed shortage and, you know, just the general stress of, you know, hospital, that all hospitals go through. I, I can't imagine that there's an advantage to that.
Obviously, if it's happening in the city of Los Angeles, it's clearly happening as well in the county of Los Angeles because of the overlap.
Well, we had some money brought, uh, down from Orange County and dumped in Skid Row just a few weeks ago.
Are you getting any cooperation or any indication of interest in this from the county board of supervisors?
Uh, no.
Okay. It could very well be that that's something that, uh, that we'll be hearing about soon.
Uh, yes.
Now, as you know, you had proposed a level of sanctions against any hospital that was found to be patient dumping. Could you give us some background on that?
Well, we wanted to, uh, seek a level of fine that would, you know, have people make sure that they didn't just incorporate it into the cost of doing business, you know, and just, you know, that it was inconsequential.
Let's make it clear to our viewers, of course, that not all hospitals, hospitals are guilty of this practice.
That's right.
And it's also other agencies and health providers that may be involved.
Yes. You're absolutely right.
What about a state role in all of this?
Well, they did try to take it to the state and the governor vetoed it at the state level. The hospital lobby is very powerful and was obviously able to, you know, gain ground up at the state level with the legislators there, but such was not to be the case here.
Speaking of the powerful hospital lobby, obviously you're aware that later, in a later session of the city council, there was a change in the level of-
Yeah.
-fine that might be levied against such a hospital.
Yeah, we had to, we had to revise that. Based on advice from the city attorney.
Okay. Can you give us the background on how that came about?
Uh, it, it was basically, I think they were reviewing, uh, state, state documents and made that recommendation to us. And that was fine.
It's also been suggested, though, in the wake of that, that $1,000 for patient dumping incident, that's just the cost of doing business. That's not a concern.
Well, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think I'm the one who just suggested that, but then, you know, we still have the issue of, of the option or this new tool, which the city attorney did not have before, which is the ability, the choice, the option of prosecuting as a misdemeanor.
Okay. And now there's been voted on unanimously for a second time.
Yeah, no, 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 we haven't voted second yet. That'll be coming up next week.
Oh, okay.
Second reading. That's what it's called, second reading.
All right. Well, then we'll look forward to the disposition of it next week.
Yeah.
Before we let you go, Ms. Perry, you're gonna have a new park in your district very soon, an exciting park.
Well, we've been working on it for four years and working with the MTA for four very, very long years. And I feel that people deserve it and I look forward to, you know, having MTA move off the property and us closing the escrow and, uh, breaking the ground and doing the testing and creating something beautiful for people.
You and I have discussed before here on Channel 35 the importance of wetlands and especially urban wetlands such as this. Tell us about the park.
Well, it'll be a very large wetland, it'll be about seven acres and it'll be an educational facility. We'll have some of the historic buildings that are on the site now left behind as, uh, places for community groups to gather and to hold meetings. And, um, it should be a multi-disciplined, uh, park, passive park, that people will be able to find almost, um, anything they want in terms of California native plants, learn about wastewater management and runoff, better management of water, uh, and just replenishing the environment.
That sounds terrific. District 9 Councilmember Jan Perry, as always, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thanks for having me.
Although item number six passed with a vote of 12 ayes and one no, an ordinance requires a unanimous vote to pass on the first reading. The item was reconsidered at Friday, May 16th meeting, where the maximum fine was set at $1,000 and that passed unanimously. LA City View is the government access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35 or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline, the And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. and on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending May 16th, 2008. On behalf of Sahel, Hello, and everyone here on Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
I'm LA Mayor Antonio Villarosa. Crime affects Angelinos in every community, but thanks to the brave men and women of the LAPD, LA is turning the corner. The city's safer than it's been in decades, but there's more work to be done. The city of Los Angeles is hiring 1,000 new police officers to fight crime and keep our streets safe. We offer competitive salaries, flexible schedules, and constant opportunities for promotion. Join me in the battle to keep our community safe.
For rock and scheduling information, call the LADOT Transit store. From any area code, dial 808-2273. Or visit our website at www.ladottransit.com. I'm Nate Holden and I will see you soon on Dash.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm an Ayengar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Namaste.
for Tuesday, May 20th, 2008. Let me welcome and praise the council members that are here, not only on time but early. Councilmember Jose Wezar, let's get a close-up on Councilmember Wezar. Councilwoman Han and Councilwoman Gruhl, who are all here. That is four members already at the top of the hour. Councilmembers pursuant to council rules, we should all be here on time, that's right. No, you came even before that, though, so I was praising that even for being early. We are expecting other council members and they should be here immediately pursuant to council rules. So if we can please have the following council members join us right away. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Labange will be arriving at 11:00. Excuse me, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss. If you'll make your way down as soon as possible. Councilmembers Zine, Wesson, Parks, and Alarcon are excused today. And as I mentioned, Mr. Labange is coming at 11:00, so we need all of those members down here right away, please. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Weiss. We are broadcast live on Channel 35 and we want to welcome our viewers through the city's cable system. Channel 35, your city channel, LA City View, is also available for council meetings recorded at 8:00 p.m. each night and rebroadcast, I think, two times in the evening. We're also available online through the city's homepage at lacity.org. If you click on the link for council meetings, you can watch live webcasts of each of our council meetings. Also on our city's homepage are links to archived video footage of all of our past council meetings. So if there's anything that we've discussed in the past that you'd like to review or hear testimony from, please avail yourself of that service. You can also get podcasts of our council meetings and you can finally use your telephone through Council Phone to call in and listen to the proceedings of the city council or any of our committees. That number is 213-621-CITY. Again, that's 213-621-CITY. So there are three ways you can watch us live, um, on Channel 35, online at lacity.org, or through Council Phone. Of course, you can always come as well live in person. We want to welcome our audience here today and members of the public who have joined us here in council chambers. We meet in room 340, John Farrow Council Chambers in City Hall. That's 200 North Spring Street. And members of the public can join us every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We also have capabilities, which I apologize that were not functioning yesterday, but should be up and running, I hope, today, through Van Nuys City Hall, to be able to testify remotely from Van Nuys. If you would like to be heard and live closer to Van Nuys, please avail yourself of that. And, um, we also bring the council meeting to the chambers there in Van Nuys City Hall every Friday, first Friday of the month. Again, we are awaiting the other council members. It is, this is a second quorum call, it's about six minutes past the hour. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Weiss. If you'll please join us as soon as possible, we need your presence to be able to begin the meeting. Are there any announcements any of the council members that are here would like to make about events in their districts or any upcoming items? I want to thank Mr. Labange and Ms. Gruhl, who joined the mayor and I this morning to announce the fourth Tiger Team here in Los Angeles. Those are Department of Transportation teams that will help move traffic along at rush hour, peak traffic. And we announced that Sunset Boulevard in Hollywood will be the latest addition to those Tiger Teams. In the meantime, we are still awaiting quorum. We appreciate everybody's patience and as soon as we have a quorum or 10 members of our 15-member body, we will begin the meeting. So sit tight and thanks again for your patience.
There's a third quorum call for Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss, if I can assist us to bring those folks down. Thank you to Councilmembers Gruel, Han, Weezer, Perry, Reyes, Smith, and Weiss. We are now waiting two more councilmembers, and it has to be these two councilmembers since we have four excuses on the desk and one made arrival excuse as well today. So, Councilmember Cardenas and Councilmember Rosendahl, could please make your way down as soon as possible. We are waiting in presence. Thank you. We have ten members, and Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zain, Garcetti, ten members present and aquorum. Ms. President?
First order of business.
Approval in a minutes.
Mr. Weezer moves, Ms. Han seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Gruel moves, Mr. Cardenas seconds. Without objection, those two will also be approved. Next order of business.
Ms. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute for today.
Okay, Mr. Rosendahl, can I ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And if I could ask everybody to please rise for a salute to the flag? And Mr. Rosendahl, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure, put your right hand over your heart and follow after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. We can please go through the agenda?
On the irregular agenda, item one is the mayor's veto message, and ten votes are required to override.
Okay, Mr. Reyes, we have the mayor's veto message at number one. I know our Chair of the ad hoc on the May first incidents, Mr. Reyes, did you want to say something on this?
Thank you, Council President. Given the pressures we have in responding to the courts, I believe we still need to have some, a focus on how we're going to proceed. My understanding is this matter has been scheduled for budget and finance as such. We need to continue this one week.
Without objection, we will take that lead from you, Mr. Reyes, and continue that for one week. We'll talk to the Budget Chair as well. It's been heard in one committee and still needs to be heard in Budget Committee, so we'll work with you to make sure that gets done or waived, so we can consider that as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Without objection, we'll continue that one week. Next items?
Items two through six, our street lighting district ordinances, notice for public hearing.
Okay, we do not have any cards on those. Those are ready for vote today?
Yes, they are.
Okay, we won't have twelve members today, so those will go to a second reading, but let's go ahead and please open the roll on a first reading, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those will go over one week. The second reading will be a week from today. Next items, please.
Items seven through eleven, our street lighting district items, notice for public hearing. Council should close the hearings and present the ordinances on June tenth.
Okay, without objection, we will close those public hearings and present the ordinances on the tenth. Let's go ahead and do that. Next items.
Items twelve through sixteen, our building and safety liens, notice for public hearing. The department reports that item thirteen may be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid, and on item sixteen, the amount should be reduced to $191.56 in as much as a partial payment has been made.
Okay, without objection, we will move to receive and file thirteen and reduce that amount on sixteen. Does anybody wish to be heard on those? The public comment cards, we have none on, so we'll open and close the public hearing. Seeing no specials, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Item seventeen through thirty-one, our items which public hearings have been held. Item seventeen is confirmation of a city official. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold seventeen on the desk. Other specials colleagues, that's eighteen through thirty-one, eighteen through thirty-one. Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll on those, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All of those are approved. Eighteen will go over one week as well as an ordinance. Next items, please.
Items thirty-two through forty-two, our items which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, if there's no objection to consideration, those are now before us. We do have speaker cards on item number forty. We'll call that special for speaker cards. From the public on the other items, we'll go ahead and open and close the public hearings. Any specials colleagues, thirty-two through forty-two, thirty-two through forty-two? If not, let's go ahead then and open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Supplemental agenda, please.
On the supplemental agenda, item forty-three is an item which public hearing has not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll call that special, Mr. Rosendahl. And let's go ahead and please go back. That is the end of the agenda?
That does take care of the other special.
We'll go to public comment now. Skye Anderson is our first speaker here in council chambers, and then we'll go out to Van Nuys Council Chambers after that with Donna Perriman and Miriam Fogler. Very good morning, Mr. Anderson.
I'm Skye Anderson, resident of Los Angeles for eight years. James Madison, the fourth party of the United States, said that governing the people was easy, governing the government was the problem, and that's why they instituted the Constitution, and that's why I'm up here speaking. Board of Supervisors doesn't have public comments, and as far as I'm concerned, they are very poorly run government organization. I want to thank Ms. Perry, she introduced legislation and got passed legislation recently, which very much benefits the people on schedule. I think Mr. Garcetti is an outstanding leader. About a year ago, he made a ruling that they cannot close the sidewalks on Hollywood Boulevard with that most of the time, but I want to comment that the lobbyists have taken over their three times, sidewalks are going to be closed on Hollywood Boulevard in June. I think that's three times too many, but Mr. Garcetti knows what he has to do. This is about Mr. Sobel and the transit company. There's an article in the paper about a man who wrote it, says, "He had frightening encounter with abusive passengers and the sudden indifference of some of the bus drivers." I'm seventy-four years old, and I ride the bus, and some drivers are just so robotic. And I was on a bus, and this really drunk person was really abusing a senior citizen, and the bus driver was less than three feet away, and he ignored the whole thing. That's some of the bus drivers, sudden indifference. Why did they do that? Because Mr. Sobel is so indifferent to human suffering. Here's another article in the LA Times. "My big complaint is always the television blurring and near constant stream of ads to make money." They made about $300,000 since 2005. One big bus, according to the bus driver, cost $500,000. They've got a captive audience, they will treat the bus, the bus drivers as if they're just a piece of crap, and why? Because Mr. Sobel wants to make money. It's not about making money, Mr. Sobel, it's about providing good transportation to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We'll inquire as to the sidewalk, as she brought up, we appreciate your comments. Donna Perriman is our next speaker, Miriam Fogler will follow out in Van Nuys. Good morning, Ms. Perriman.
Eric Garcetti, I really missed you. It's been hard with the Council President's Houdini Act. Now you see him, now you don't. Well, actually, now you hear him, now you don't, because I listen on council phone. By the way, I've been hearing a lot of mumbling in the background when I'm on council phone, but you don't hear it when you, council member speaks. So now I know why Zuma Dog gets mad. Anyway, I want to thank, I like to thank Zuma Dog for mentioning Miriam, Sharon, and myself on our hard-working fighting for fee waivers. When you get complimented by Zuma Dog is an honor. Thank you, Zuma Dog, for your hard work. Let me say to Arnold Sacks, "Why do you put all the city employees together? Why don't you target the city council, mayor, city attorney, high-priced pencil presser administrators? Money is spent waiting for council members for other meetings. I know federal has too many chiefs, not enough indias. I'm sure the same with the city. For high-priced employees, let them volunteer, like some of the city council, not to take a raise. It's not fair to put on the backs of the middle-class city employees. The non-city employees, like myself, use city services. Yes, the public wants the city's employees to forgo their hard-working raises and make themselves responsible for saving the city. They will not renegotiate. It's not going to happen." And I also want to mention about Wilshire Boulevard. I'm not happy about the subway to the sea, because I'm really concerned that they will break up Wilshire Boulevard, and people who take the buses won't be able to get to work. And I can't just simply go down another street, because it would be very difficult for me to walk all the way and find a way to work, so. And I'm mad about the 720s, they ruined them, and they're turning them into 920s because they want their subway to the sea. So, please don't ruin Wilshire Boulevard, and I'm glad you're back, Eric.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. I was off on jury duty for a little bit there, so thank you for your kind comments. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker, and then Rick Nightengale will be after her. Good morning.
Good morning. I want to compliment you about having the presentation on the state of Israel. Very important, this is a very important, important for the world, because they're the ones that have given us the Ten Commandments, and I just read in the paper last week, in Palmdale, they just put the Ten Commandments up. Even if it's secular, I mean, it's a secular government, you still have to abide by the rule of God, by the rule of law of God, you know, which is God's, God's laws. So, we need to put it up in here, and to show you people need to learn some ethics through the Ten Commandments, okay? The first thing you need to do is have this put on here, put up here, so that the public can be able to appreciate that the government here, the city government, is doing something about its house in order. Here, the horseshoe. Thou shall not steal, and thou shall not lie. Okay, if you're going to do these things, you're going to be very, very sorry when you get back, when you go to the other place. You know, we all go there eventually, okay? And that's a fact of life. So, you're going to have to get used to the fact that you need to answer to, not just the people, but to God. And as I, she was saying earlier, you know, it's, water and power is the one that always gets the money, and the city council gets their raises, and the managers get their big humongous raises, and of course, when you've got gas going up, food going up, everything going up, we go have the coal, which is my, to me, in my opinion, is fair, but it's not fair to get the city council percentage. They should go by something less than what the lower, the middle-class people. People are making less than 200,000 a year. You're close to 200,000.
Thank you very much. Rick Nightengale is our next speaker. After that will be Sharon Brewer. Good morning, Mr. Nightengale.
Good morning. My name's Rick Nightengale. I'd like to talk roughly about, you know, I was interrupted in that stuff Wednesday, and I'd like to know what the rules of order are. So if it's possible to have a copy that the chambers hear, or drop one at the city attorney's office, or the area from Mr. Smith, that's the area I'm from, number twelve, I'll pick it up there. I deeply appreciate that, so then I know the rules. I'd like to talk roughly about gray water. I see it was in the paper. It was a big political thing back when Mayor Han, I mean, yeah, Mayor Han was turning around and running, and our racist mayor today, really, everybody bad-mouthed it, and thought it was a bad idea and so forth. Well, here it is in the paper again, and we spent millions and millions of dollars putting the system in. Well, here it comes again. I would love to get some gray water up where I live. I live over in, excuse me, Sherwood Forest, over in Northridge. My water bill's $700 every two months. I have three quarters an acre, I got over $100,000 for the plants, I ain't going to let it die. What does Seesun Turnaround have? In my area, we'd love to have it. Bring it down, Balboa. What about Norwood Country Club? I'm sure they would love to have it. How much money do you think in gallons of water that we waste putting in the ground to turn around and water the lawns, the plants, and so forth, that we could save? Most all of us, I do have an irrigation meter. It does help me in my bill, that I don't have to pay sewer charge, but still, it's still an outrageous amount of water, even with people with pools. We fill them, and we can't do anything about it. We can't let our stuff die. Then what would this area look like? So, I think you ought to see about taking the thing down with DWP down Balboa Boulevard, and we'd just all love it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Sharon Brewer will be our last speaker in Van Nuys. Good morning, Ms. Brewer.
Morning, Sharon Brewer. Public comment. Councilmembers, special event fee waivers continue to add up July 1st, 2007 to May 16, 2008. Total is now $5,41,161 plus. May total, seven days, $562,206.78 total, sixty-three with amounts, twelve reimbursed, three no amounts. Again, I remind the city council members that the fee waiver policy is from time to time, not three times a week, every week, every month, that the council may decide to waive fees when it can be demonstrated that a direct public benefit can be obtained. These policies are not intended to replace or supersede the revenue policy stating that sufficient user charges and fees will be pursued and levied to support full cost of operations for which fees are charged. The fee waiver issues have been discussed by council members since 1999. I don't understand why, in almost ten years, that the council members haven't dealt with the issue, in that if you figure ten years' worth of fee waivers, how many hundreds of millions of dollars has the city waived in fee waivers? I also have a question. In the Daily News, it said that the park rangers were being reinstated, or there was, the positions were there, but McCree goes and says that there's no funding for it, and I thought that he was giving the money for the park rangers, so I'm kind of confused on that issue. And again, back to the fee waivers, you have, block parties will still exist without the fee waivers. Again, don't involve the city services in the event, and city council, take a stand until you make policy, no more fee waivers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer. That'll close our general public comment. If we can take the first item called special, please.
Item seventeen is the appointment of Mr. Bongwon Kim as the General Manager of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment.
Okay, if we can ask Mr. Kim to come forward? And I know Mr. Alarcon is not here today, so I'd like to call our Vice Chair of our Education and Neighborhoods Committee, who has chaired that committee in the past, stalwart neighborhood council defender, and creator, actually, from the days of the Charter Commission, Ms. Han, to make some opening comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. We're here today to confirm the appointment of Bongwon Kim as General Manager of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. He becomes the fifth person to attempt to lead this department and really get this department back to its original mission that we envisioned in the city charter in 1999, which was to really empower neighborhoods. That's what DUNN stands for, is Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. And there's been a lot of growing pains with neighborhood councils, but, and you may want to address the council in terms of your vision for the department, your vision for the commission, your vision for neighborhood councils as we really move into the future with them. But one of the things I said in committee was, you know, this department has gone through a lot of upheaval, really, just in terms of the number of general managers, but, one of the more difficult periods in this department was, of course, the untimely passing of Carol Baker Tharp, whom many people had looked to as a positive force of leading the department, but I remember Carol saying many times that it was a twofer with her, and that you were her partner, you, she really saw her job as being a leader, but having you at her side. She always really felt that you, as the number-two person, made that leadership team what it needed to be. So, I really wanted to say that I knew she had great respect for you, she had great hope in your abilities to lead the department as well as her. So, it's a tough time in the department, but I'm here to say that I support your appointment as the General Manager, and know that you can certainly count on my support as I continue to push and prod and lead and encourage the neighborhood councils throughout the city of Los Angeles to really be empowered to, at the end of the day, improve their neighborhoods and improve their community. So, you may, again, may want to address the council and some of your ideas for the vision.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bongwon Kim. Soon to be, hopefully, permanent General Manager of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, currently interim. I think for everyone to appreciate what's happened at the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment over the past fifteen months is very important, and it was well-stated by Councilman Alarcon at the last meeting, that we have the NCRC recommendations, which, as you know, was a mayor and city council-appointed citizens' commission that came up with seventy-three recommendations on revamping and revising, and making, seventy-three recommendations on improving the neighborhood council system. At the same time, we had the untimely death of Carol Baker Tharp, and when we came in together, we instantly bonded on this vision of shared leadership. And we said, you know, wouldn't that be a great message to send out to the neighborhood councils that really it is about shared leadership? That being elected to a board for the neighborhood council is not so much, I'm elected, so therefore I get to do what I want, but it's as a steward of the public will of your neighborhood and your community, and your job is to get as many people under the big tent to offer the best advice that you can for our city elected decision-makers on the issues that are most permanent to your neighborhood. And then, last- And then, uh, lastly, we have the fiscal budget situation. We're currently 25% understaffed. And so, you can kind of get a picture of the, the kind of tumultuous events that have affected the department and, um, Councilman Alarcon jokingly stated that, uh, I should get the job because I'm still standing after what the department has been through. But it is, um, it is a deep honor, uh, and I am, uh, I consider this position, uh, full of challenges, but to be blessed to be given the opportunity to be of service to all the residents of Los Angeles is an incredible opportunity. And if you think about a startup business, much like, uh, you can think about the neighborhood council system as being only seven years old, that there's still a lot of kinks to work out as we improve the way that neighborhood councils work, both in the communities as well as the processes by which they offer advice and develop collaborations with city departments. And that's primarily the job of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. We are in a state of transition right now. We are waiting for the council to decide on the 73 recommendations. We're working very closely with Education and Neighborhoods Committee. And we, more importantly, we are also, I believe it is very important that we collaborate with neighborhood councils and get their feedback at every opportunity on the major policy and systemic changes that we're looking to neighborhoods, to, to the, make to the neighborhood council system. I see my role as a cheerleader, as an advocate, as a translator in some respects about how the city depart, particular city department can find the best working relationship with the neighborhood councils, and as, uh, an advocate to the city council offices and to the city departments. So, I wear a lot of hats in this position. And, um, you know, the staff in the department, uh, have been just incredibly impressive to me. They have really been tasked with, there've been staff in the department that have been here from the beginning, and, um, their belief and commitment to the vision of this neighborhood council system is very, um, inspiring to me. And, uh, there are plenty of other departments that they could work for, but this is the department that has a truly community-based mission and vision that speaks to something deeper in their heart about what they see as their value that they're gonna contribute to the city. So I am, um, just enormously pleased to be here before you for your consideration.
Thank you, and I urge an aye vote today, colleagues.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. Before we go to our next speaker, I know we have, uh, some groups of young people that are here. Uh, Mr. Weiss, like to announce, and then Ms. Han, another one as well?
Well, after you, Ms. Han.
Ms. Han.
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. Weiss. I wanted to, uh, introduce, uh, one of my favorite, uh, churches and schools in Watts. Saint Lawrence is here and Father Peter Banks is here, and this is seventh grade class is here. Welcome to City Hall.
Stand up and we'll give you a round of applause.
Yes, stand up. Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Han, and welcome very much. Mr. Weiss?
Very cool. Well, for the folks from Saint Peter's, I'd like to introduce you to the girls from the 12th grade at Miss Yakov in my district. You guys stand up. You're here from Ms. Friedkis, Ms. Allshuler, and Ms. Warshafter's class. Nice to have you guys as well.
Welcome to City Hall. Yes, uh, Mr. Cardenas.
And pay attention to what we're talking about, because we're talking about neighborhood councils, and the neighborhood councils do have positions for students, for people under the age of 18. So pay attention, you're part of your community, and this is a great discussion for you to be listening to.
Right. Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Our next speaker on this issue is Ms. Gruel. That'll be followed by Mr. Reyes and then Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and I too want to stand in support of Bong Hwan Kim. We've had the pleasure of knowing each other, uh, since the early 90s, I believe. And Bong Hwan Kim, uh, worked very closely with KYCC, um, which was, uh, the organization I think he helped found, um, and his commitment to public service and to the community, uh, at a young age then, we're still young, right? Okay. Young age then, uh, was critically important as we dealt with the post-riots, um, in the city of Los Angeles and bringing together the African-American and Korean community, uh, which was so critical after, uh, the riots at that time. I think, uh, you've ta, you know, taken those skills, uh, to the next level as being, uh, now the, not only the interim general manager, assistant general manager, and now, uh, after today, the general manager of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. And there's no greater example than this last Saturday, uh, when, uh, we were on, uh, Washington Boulevard and had people from all over the city, uh, there, uh, learning about different communities, talking about the issue of gangs and what they could do. And I, I just was so impressed, and Council President Garcetti and I, uh, were, were there at lunchtime, and then it just, I, I think we both had big smiles on our face, that in fact, that what DUNN was able to do, um, was bring people in the city together. And the challenges are many, um, and we know that. And the role of the neighborhood councils and how they, uh, can have their place and, and their impact felt, I think, is continuing and evolving. And the role of DUNN, and, and I know that you and, um, Carol Baker Tharp were particularly trying to struggle with that as we got past the whole organizational issues and now really to substantive issues, um, how could we, we deal with that? And I, I think you're the perfect person for the job. I know that Carol is smiling upon us, um, and that, as Ms. Han mentioned, uh, she felt so strong with you by her side and there, and would be pleased, uh, that you chose to go for this position and the mayor selected you and that today the city council will support you. Uh, but I know that you bring the, the skills necessary, um, and the passion necessary to make this job, I think, really, a, a great position and to bring all those neighborhood councils together. And, and I said, like, last Saturday was just really exciting. Uh, as I, as I left there, I thought, this is what the neighborhood councils are about, is getting people from Studio City to come down to Washington Boulevard at this school and see what was happening there in those neighborhoods and across the city. So, congratulations, um, your challenges before us, I think, as you and I spoke earlier, someone said to you, why would you want this job? It's a difficult job, uh, but I know that that is, um, where your heart is. And so I stand in support, Mr. President, uh, for Bong Hwan Kim and look forward to your many accomplishments as the new general manager of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. Congratulations. It's good to see you standing, or should I say sitting, this position. How large is the city? How many people are we dealing with?
Hmm, by last count, roughly 4 million people.
4 million. And how many neighborhood councils do you work with?
Uh, currently 88, and about 10% of the city still has to be represented by neighborhood councils.
So 88 neighborhood councils, but how many individuals in total within the 88?
Uh, we're talking about total 1,500 elected board members.
1,500 elected board members. And how large is your staff?
Uh, we work 51, and then the recent, the current budget has 48 positions, uh, 20 of which are field staff. We have an administrative support staff, and the remainder works on our funding program.
So you have about 48, more or less, to deal with. 88 neighborhood councils, we still have 10% of the city to go.
Correct.
So, when we talk about land use issues, which seems to be where neighborhood councils are very vocal and concerned, how is it that your staff is able to address these neighborhood councils in dealing with such complicated issues? I'm just curious, how do you approach that? Please hold my time.
Well, um, part of my vision, uh, for the department is really to emphasize training, education, and capacity building. Um, I see that as the principal goal that we have to invest resources on. Um, many elected board members, uh, this is the first time in a public decision-making role. Um, so things like the Brown Act, um, how to resolve grievances, how to conduct meetings, uh, are sometimes very challenging. So, uh, what we would like to develop is a curriculum, a standing curriculum that could be available online, available as much as possible, for people to get the tools and resources. Currently, um, we are working with the planning department, um, and they're working with neighborhood councils on a pilot training program, because they understand that knowledge is power. And land use is an extremely complex, um, uh, series of issues and processes that you, if you don't know what you're talking about, you're gonna easily get in trouble. So, um, the educational aspect, particularly on land issues, land use issues is extremely important. And so, I see us rolling out a number of these kinds of training activities.
And so, I know because of budget cuts and our dire times we have with our, with our, um, economic, uh, condition here in the city, if not in the country, in the ideal world, what would be the number of staff you would need to say you have a chance to succeed as opposed to maintain and, and preserve? Am I characterizing this?
Absolutely. Uh, over the past five years, uh, the Department of Neighborhoods budget has consistently declined. Um, and from a period, I think, the, we were most staffed at 60 positions and we went downhill from there. So it's, it kind of goes against the trend in terms of the neighborhood council system becoming more complex, trying to build more participation, that, uh, really the city needs to invest more resources. So from my opinion, uh, if we could have, um, gee, uh, in this current budget climate, I've never been asked what our ideal version is.
Wishful thinking, wishful thinking.
But, uh, 65 positions, um, a lot of them going out in the field, and again, offering these training programs. Uh, the funding program is a major challenge. We're administering $5 million in public funds, and we want to help neighborhood councils use those funds more strategically. So there are a number of goals that I think if we were resourced adequately, we could make a, a fundamental shift in the role that neighborhood councils are playing citywide.
See, one of the key concerns I have, quite frankly, is it's still, it's very disturbing to me when I see a study from USC that says that the makeup of the neighborhood councils do not reflect the city, that the decision-makers and the stakeholder neighborhood councils, it does not reflect the interests or the needs of the majority of the people, given the makeup of the council, when you compare it to who lives in the city. So, the individuals who make up that sector of the city that are renters, that are people of color, Latino, African-American, Asian, that's not what you see in the neighborhood councils. And that is from an academic institution that is very well-known for its sociological and planning studies. And so I take it very serious, that type of analysis. And that was a few years ago. I don't know how much has changed, but I would ask you that perhaps we need to start focusing on how we bring in those communities who do not have a tradition, who have access or just very basically time to be involved, because they're carrying two jobs, they're dealing with how to pay rent, or how they're gonna feed their kids. So the leisure, quote-unquote, time to do this is very critical. So, how do you see us moving forward, given that we are an international city, we have the largest populations of other countries in the city, and yet we can't, they're not participating in this very critical organization? Any thoughts on that in closing?
Yes, you've, you've touched an issue that's dear to my heart, um, that, uh, national studies do indicate that neighborhood council systems across major cities, uh, it's that Los Angeles is basically, uh, similar to other cities. And it would kind of make sense to, to all of us that those of, those who, people who have more time, who have more resources, who are better educated, uh, are going to be the ones that are the early adopters of this kind of civic engagement initiative. So, um, one, I would say that, uh, the beauty of the neighborhood council system is that it is across all neighborhoods of this city, and it reaches into every neighborhood and all the diversity. Currently, the data of participation is roughly flipped, a reverse of what the demographics of neighborhood councils are. So, um, I am deeply committed to allowing every Angeleno an opportunity to participate, and that may need, that may mean for us to look at providing services in different, uh, ways for, uh, economically challenged communities of color, for example, versus more affluent communities, and that we need to direct our resources differently depending on what, how the communities are different. We can't take a cookie cutter approach across the whole city and expect everybody to participate. That's not gonna work.
Well, let me just make an appeal for you and DUNN. For any teachers out there who are watching this, any principals of English as a second language class, please consider speaking to Mr. Kim, who's gonna be our next general manager, and make him aware of the opportunity of engaging those adults who are learning English, who has a secondary language, perhaps learn from you how they can facilitate their curriculum and how to become part of that process. And perhaps we can tap into the ESAT world, there are thousands and thousands of adults there who make time to learn English, and just maybe learning English, they can learn how to be a civic participant in the DUNN program. And perhaps they can call you, uh, call your organization, and maybe you can contact some of the principals and teachers and fold them in and meet them where they're at, and perhaps create a greater, what can I say, diversity in participation. So congratulations to you. I know you've been to Stalwart, you've taken a lot of hits, and you're still standing, so congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman.
Ask for an aye vote.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl's our next speaker. After that is Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Fine, how are you?
Good. As you know, I have eight neighborhood councils in the 11th district. I'm a believer of neighborhood councils. I believe they're part of the grassroots democracy. And for an elected official, the more input you get from various people in the community, hopefully the more you will represent them and appreciate how to build consensuses and coalitions to get things done. It's not easy, but neighborhood councils are one of the groups I go to for everything. Um, but I also go to chamber of commerces, I also go to homeowner groups, I also go to renter groups, I go to whatever community groups I can get input from who care about a particular situation. But the eight neighborhood councils are, for me, a strong grassroots strategy, knowing that. But we have an issue, as you and I both know, about the Brentwood Neighborhood Council and Pacific Palisades Neighborhood Council. You know, the Pacific Palisades Neighborhood Council's been around 36 years. Frankly, I think it works better than all this neighborhood council concept, because they are a community self-contained that have figured out a way to be representative. The reason they haven't joined the neighborhood council is they don't like the Brown Act, they think it's just too much BS and confusion and manipulation and bureaucracy. And secondly, they want to continue to have the right to sue the city if they don't think the city's doing the right thing. But our policy of neighborhood councils is you can sue the city and you have to follow the Brown Act, right? Okay.
Currently, yes. Although the, one of the NCRC recommendations is looking at adopting the Sunshine Act in place of the Brown Act, so we will be returning to the council on that policy, uh, recommendation.
What about the ability to sue the city?
That one we haven't addressed.
That one what?
We have not addressed that.
Okay. Let's address that in future discussions, because frankly, I don't want to disarm the community and its ability to, to be what they need to be to be effective in a democracy, um, but I am not saying we must take away, you know, whatever. I, I just would like a healthy discussion on the ability to sue or not to sue. Okay?
Yes.
All right. Saying that as a backdrop, um, when we went through the budget process, uh, we saw that councils weren't spending their money. Um, and now I've met with all my council people to talk about it, and some of them have plans that go on more than one moment, so they're committing monies. Um, and so we're moving, uh, in that direction. Last thing I want to tell you is, I've grabbed five of my neighborhood councils to work with Culver City. You know, my district has three other governments in it, all of Santa Monica, a good chunk of Culver City and LA County with Marina Del Rey. So we had some issues and development issues on the Culver City side of the street. So now I formed this collective group of, of Del Rey, uh, Palms, Venice, Mar Vista, and Westchester Neighborhood Councils. They're working together in a cooperative effort with the city of Culver. So in the future, us, cities, all work together in community. Do you appreciate the idea of neighborhood councils bonding with other cities like I'm setting up?
Oh, absolutely. Um, the neighborhood council in the city of Los Angeles does not exist in a vacuum. I mean, we rely on multiple levels of government, from county to state and federal, and so, uh, my belief and vision is that the more empowered neighborhood councils can get, the more capacity-building efforts that we do, that they are going to be able to incorporate these additional, uh, jurisdictional levels in their policy advisory positions.
And if you had a couple of goals for yourself, assuming we do confirm you, which I'm 100% for, what are they?
Well, the, as I stated before, the number-one goal is it, training, education, and capacity building. Uh, the second goal is visibility, um, outreach, and increasing participation. As Councilman Reyes said, we have to improve the diversity of the neighborhood council system. And thirdly is improving the capacity of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. The department has been through a lot of ups and downs since its formation and has been charged with a lot of the procedural setup requirements of the neighborhood council system, such as elections, such as funding, such as certification. And so the DUNN is really poised at this point, as soon as And so the Dunn is really poised at this point, as soon as we get done with the twenty-five more neighborhood council elections that will be completed in December, this is a unique moment in the history of the, of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, that we really have an opportunity to focus on our true mission and vision, which is around improving the ability of people to actively engage in civic life.
Great. We got in the mail, as you know, from the city clerk, telling us to register or not to register. If we want to be a stakeholder and vote in our neighborhood council area there, do we have to fill out that form that we were sent, or can we do that when we go vote? What do we need to do as a citizen within a different geography area regarding this election coming up?
Since we're out of the city clerk-administered elections, it would be most appropriate for the city clerk to respond to their procedures that they're following. But our role in the city clerk-administered elections is to focus on outreach. So we would offer the opportunity for all council offices in the affected neighborhood councils to participate in press conferences. The mayor himself has expressed a commitment to participate, an interest in engaging in the outreach activities, publicizing the fact that neighborhood councils are here and there for everybody.
Last comment is knowledge is power, like you said earlier. You know, citizens don't know the Byzantine labirinto bureaucracy. I mean, I'm learning it, I still don't know what I'm doing. Every day I'm learning more, okay, because it's a constant learning process. And so you will do it on land-use issues, will you do it on transportation issues? What issues will you cover to empower the community so they know what they're talking about?
Well, we want to hear from the neighborhood councils themselves what the priority issues are. We know that based on a lot of their activities, land use is a big issue, transportation is a big issue. But in South LA, gang violence is a major issue. So we also have to be able to distinguish the unique regional needs that neighborhood councils have, as opposed to a citywide approach, as I was saying before. So I think we have to, it's my job to be sure to listen to what the neighborhood councils are saying they need from the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, and then to be a kind of broker between the city and the neighborhood councils, to find where the right matches can be made, where the best added value in terms of this civic engagement initiative is, is going to be made.
I'm very happy with Gail Goldberg and her outreach on planning issues.
If I could ask you to press your button again.
She did a great job empowering people. We're very pleased. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Cardenas is our next speaker, and then Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much. I wasn't going to speak, but Councilmember Reyes brought something to my, to all of our attention that I think is very important. The thing about the neighborhood councils, it's not about only citizens participating, correct?
Correct.
And it's not just about residents participating, correct?
Correct.
It's also about businesses who have a vested interest in that particular geographic area, churches, not-for-profits. Basically, if somebody is spending part of their life, or their energy, or their efforts in that neighborhood, they have a stake in that community, correct? So therefore, they can be part of the elected body of a neighborhood council.
Absolutely.
And then without question, everybody and anybody, just like today, is invited to come and hear in those public meetings, correct?
That's correct.
Well, Councilmember Reyes touched on something that I think that Americans need to really understand, as, as fortunate and as spoiled as we are in this great democracy that we live in, and that is that there are a lot of people who come to this country, who are here legally, for example, who come here just to work hard, and also, they make it their belief that they need to just be quiet, and not make any waves, and not speak up. And the fact of the matter is, there are a lot of people who are in this country who came from other countries, that because they spoke up, they had to flee their country. Because they actually believed strongly enough in something and said, hey, that's not right. In those countries, they didn't have the right, like we do here, to speak up. So they actually fled their country, and they come here, they were hard-working in their own country, they were very giving individuals, they were very much into providing not only for themselves, but their entire community, and that's why they spoke up. And all of a sudden, they're being taught by their home country that the country they fled from is that because you spoke up, you had to literally flee for your life. And yet here, they come to Los Angeles, and they have this opportunity to participate in their community, maybe in their place of business, or where they live, or where their children go to school, or where they go to church and pray, that they have the right to join a neighborhood council. But I think it's incumbent upon Dunn and the neighborhood councils to actually try to remind people of that, and to invite them to participate, and to invite them to be welcome in these neighborhood councils. Because I've heard, and I'm not going to repeat some of the rhetoric that have come out of some neighborhood councils in my district, or some neighborhood councils in, in the community of Los Angeles, that are un-inviting, that really are trying to say, us and them. So I think it's important for us to realize that you, as the head of this particular department, you don't run the individual neighborhood councils, but the spirit of the neighborhood councils comes to you. And I think it's incumbent upon you and your department to remind neighborhood councils that they need to err on the side of being welcoming, rather than err on the side of saying, well, I just feel mad, or angry, or the economy's bad, or what have you, and those people, and this and that, and therefore, that rhetoric is acceptable. That rhetoric is not acceptable, correct?
Absolutely.
What is the department doing to make sure that that rhetoric is toned down, so that more people feel comfortable, they're welcome?
Well, in the most egregious cases, we will take it up with the proper authorities, with the city attorney, when we feel the neighborhood councils are not, are being, and practicing exclusive behavior. I personally find that unacceptable, and I will go personally to speak with the neighborhood council board about that, that it's their mission to be as inclusive as possible. So from the enforcement side, which I really would like to downplay, there are instances where we do need to step in, but for the most part, I would see approaching it as really around promoting best practices. East Hollywood Neighborhood Council, the most recent, one of the most recently certified neighborhood councils, does some very interesting ways of arranging meetings. They say, rather than setting up a table of fifteen board members sitting up in the front, which can be kind of intimidating for a newcomer, especially the kind of immigrant that you described, Councilman, that they act, the board members actually sit in the audience, and they engage with people who are new to them, and they especially make it a point to reach out to people who are new to the meetings. And so I see spreading that around all the neighborhood councils, and saying, this is a best practice for how neighborhood councils can be more inclusive. I think the immigrant, being a childhood of immigrants myself, I am very familiar with the dynamics of how new immigrants try to acculturate to, to American life. And currently, the way the neighborhood councils are set up can be very intimidating. The Brown Act can often seem like a foreign language in and of itself, even though it's spoken in English. Language, of course, is a big issue. Economic diversity, of course, is another issue. Again, here, education and capacity building, our staff focusing on doing the outreach to where we feel those people are most likely to be touched by the message that the neighborhood councils are for you. I see that as part of our job, that as soon as we can get out of the election, administration of elections, I see the shift of our resources being devoted to going out to the ESL classes, going out to public schools, engaging with civil service learning initiatives in high schools and colleges, and saying that this is really kind of a diamond in the rough in terms of people having an opportunity to learn about public problem-solving, about engaging with city government in ways that they never would have imagined. You know, I've talked, the best thing about this job is reaching out to all different areas of this great city, and being inspired by people who never thought that they would be sitting as an elected board member, engaging in a dialogue with the city councilman or the GM of a city department, and that, that opportunity would not be there were it not for neighborhood councils.
Yes, and I think it's important, one last point, Mr. President, is that I think it's important that people understand how important neighborhood councils are, because this is the level of government that has created the neighborhood councils, that deal with streets, roads, trees, policing, firefighters, stop signs, potholes, speed bumps, all those kinds of things, and more, water, power, all these kinds of things, our parks, libraries, that's what the neighborhood councils have the opportunity, and they very often get the heads of departments to come to their little neighborhood council, in their corner of this four-million-person city, and they get the straight scoop on how they can help themselves in their neighborhood. So I want to thank you for your work, I have a lot of confidence in you, and as I tell you all the time, I think you're crazy for taking this job, but thank you and God bless you for, for doing the wonderful work that you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to just ask you a few questions, because my, my area has a distinction of having probably more problems than some of the other areas. I wanted you to just expand on your role in, I guess, diminishing that, the aspect of politics within board activities on the neighborhood councils, unethical behavior and unethical expenditures, where I've had some of a history of that already, and then activities that members of the neighborhood councils may engage in using city resources that would be, could be construed as political, and what you see your role in all that, in terms of stopping it.
Right. Historically, the department has been, and city policies have been erred on the, on the side of being more lax with the used neighborhood council use of public funds. The mayor has requested the department on a report on how to improve the public accountability on the use of funds. I believe that our position should be that neighborhood councils should be given as much flexibility on the use of those funds, as only they know how, they are closest to the neighborhoods, and so they should be able to direct the resources that they think will most benefit quality-of-life issues in their neighborhood. However, every penny should be transparent and should be publicly accountable, so for stakeholders as well as city decision-makers.
I want to just say one thing, and I, you know, I'm going to vote for you today, but I think you need to dig down a little deeper, because each neighborhood is very different, and in some cases, as I mentioned to you yesterday, one of the neighborhood councils has compiled money over the course of three years and not spent it on anything other than, you know, to benefit their own personal relationships. In other cases, some of them have been decertified because of that kind of behavior. So I think it, from a logic standpoint, doesn't help to allow some group to be lax in the way that they're able to use money, and then ultimately, they end up getting certified for unethical or illegal behavior, or abusive behavior. I, I think it's better to deal with it upfront, and to set the ground rules, so people go in with an expectation, this is how we conduct ourselves, you know, we're not supposed to engage in political activity with city resources, we're not supposed to take a credit card from the neighborhood council and, and do something that could be construed as unethical. And if they know that coming in, coming in the door, maybe that would stop a lot of the conflict that takes place at, at neighborhood council meetings, at board meetings, playing around with notice, playing around posting notice, abusing each other verbally, threatening people, things like that, which still continues in my district.
I'm, I'm well aware of the dynamics of some of the neighborhood councils in your district. On the funding question, it is a major priority of mine to improve the transparency and the integrity of the use of public funds, and we are about to move into a series of management practices that will enforce existing procedures, but we will also be looking to improve and develop new procedures that will really maintain the public integrity of public funds. The, the lack of civil discourse in some neighborhood councils is a major challenge. One of the things that we are developing now is a citywide grievance system, and this comes out of the recommendations of the, of the 912 Commission. The approach that I would like to see us taking is really a self-policing role as much as possible, that peers, other neighborhood councils who understand that experience of being a neighborhood council board member, we would set up a process where they be, basically become the jury of their peers and other neighborhood councils. It becomes problematic when Dunn comes in with a heavy hand, because we don't really have the, the resources to investigate violations when it becomes a he-said, she-said situation.
Well, I have to just tell you, just on my own experience, Dunn has never had a heavy hand in trying to mitigate those situations, and we can talk later as you get into this about self-policing, because I'm not sure that would work either. Maybe you can join with the city attorney's office with alternative dispute resolution, something like that, but people need a framework.
Yes.
And structure, and to know that there's a third-party dispassionate observer there to give them advice.
Right. I'd be more than happy with, to work with your office to address the unique dynamics of the neighborhood councils in your district.
Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, as the discussion continues, I wanted to, I'm not sure if this is appropriate during an appointment, but I wanted to make a motion if we could move that we get a report from Dunn on how to engage ESL classes into the neighborhood council process. In other words, perhaps we can get a report from you, once you're appointed, that allows us to understand how we can connect with the adult school system. I do know every year when we graduate hundreds of adults, when they achieve their, their GED, or they are able to acquire other degrees, that ESL is a significant piece of their experience. Perhaps we can have Dunn work with ESL, and I would be more than happy to ask the school board members, Mano Garcia is a, a strong advocate, the adult school systems are, are there for us, they're in the neighborhoods. I think it's an issue of how we connect and engage the adults when they have the time to look at these issues, because their focus is taking care of their children, making the rent, and surviving in the city. So is that something that would be appropriate?
I, I will pursue that with or without a council motion, I promise you that.
Okay, but I'd like to formalize it, because it, can we second that?
Sure.
So that'll be a motion?
Sure.
And is that appropriate, Mr. Attorney?
It would be appropriate as a report back.
Report back?
Okay.
Okay, so that'd be the motion, a report back, on addressing that opportunity.
Absolutely, Councilman.
Okay, and just in closing, to the children that are here from the school, what I passed out to your teacher is a set of Leo Palitti postcards, a bunch of great paintings that he painted back in the 30s, and he would write prolifically about the beauty of Los Angeles, which is diversity. And he has one passage about barriers. Now, he would wish that the energy and the love that comes from children, regardless of color, regardless of class, regardless of how much money your parents make, they are able to play together and enjoy life, and how we are translating that life into adults and into other social settings is something he would wish for. So the postcards are there, it depicts scenes of children in Alberta Street throughout the city, Bunker Hill in its heyday, and please enjoy and hope you learn from this discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, this has been a very, as always, engaging debate and conversation about the future of neighborhoods, about the ability to get people engaged in their communities, in their neighborhoods, and ultimately, doing their civic duty by waning into us down here at City Hall, so that their voice is heard when we make decisions. But I feel compelled, and when we have discussions like this about who's involved in neighborhood councils and who's not involved in neighborhood councils, that there are a lot of people in neighborhoods who are involved. They may not be in their neighborhood councils. I will tell you, I have many parents who are involved in their schools, many parents who are involved in a, a sports team, many parents who are involved in after-school programs, many people who are involved in their church or their synagogue, many people are involved. It doesn't mean that they're not involved in their neighborhood if they don't happen to show up at the, the neighborhood council. But what I think still is a big disconnect, is how then do all these various groups that people are involved in get connected for a voice in neighborhood councils? And by the way, many people will never show up at neighborhood council unless there is an issue that is affecting their block. And I have seen that over and over again in various neighborhood councils. If there's something controversial, if there's some new development that happens to be going in in their neighborhood, then they might be engaged to come to the neighborhood council and see what they might be able to do to chart the course of a development in their neighborhood. But I still think it's the makeup of the neighborhood councils that I think could be furthered to connect all these groups. For instance, if you had someone from education sitting on the neighborhood council in a particular neighborhood, then they would be more likely to engage the ESL classes, or they would be more likely to engage the parents in the PTA with the neighborhood council. I think that still is a disconnect, because people will be involved in their neighborhood in a variety of ways, but is there a way to connect them to this voice of neighborhood councils that certainly sometimes can be the loudest voice coming from, from a neighborhood? And I see that in Watts, with the Watts Neighborhood Council, as well as the Watts Gang Task Force. Father Peter shows up at the Watts Gang Task Force every Monday, and is able to connect the different- the different needs and voices within his sphere of influence to the neighborhood council and to the greater group of the stakeholders in the Watts Gang Task Force. So I still think there's a disconnect between the police advisory boards, between the CACs, the CRA CACs, between the park advisory boards. We have people involved in all of these areas in their neighborhoods, but sometimes they're all speaking one, a, a different voice when in fact neighborhood councils, I think, were always envisioned as being the vehicle in a neighborhood to connect everybody, no matter where you're involved, no matter what meetings you're attending, no matter how you're wanting to make your school, your church, your neighborhood a better place. So maybe we could do a better job of trying to connect everybody.
I couldn't agree with you more. There are, um, there's one recommendation that we're currently working on with city departments, and I could see the potential for really rethinking the community advisory input processes that various city departments have. As you said, as neighborhood councils grow in their capacity to be effective connectors of existing civic organizations, the type that you're describing, that they become a very effective conduit for resident input into policies and resource allocation decisions. So I could see the evolution really be, including a rethinking of the community advisory process for citywide, and I believe that neighborhood councils do have that potential.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn, and, uh, very much look forward to continuing our, our work together as well, and especially around Neighborhood Leadership Institute and building that capacity of leadership as well. So I will save my, my comments to our, to our work privately, you have my full support. There are two public speaker cards. We did have a public hearing on this, but since it's only two, colleagues, I think I'd move that we just reopen the public hearing to hear these two individuals if there's no objection. Sharon Brewer out in Van Nuys will be our first speaker. After that, we'll come back here for Theodore Thomas, Sr.
Thank you, Sharon Brewer, on item number 31.
This is 17, sorry.
Oh, sorry, 17. Been waiting too long, sorry.
It's okay.
Um, I have some questions that I hope that the new general manager will deal with. I would like to know why the NCs are not completing the ethics trainings that has been required for two years. I would like to know whether or not he will look into the NCs not being held accountable by Dunn for submitting audits. A lot of the NCs are over a year behind on their audits, but they are still being provided with funds. About the NCs being allowed to not keep copies of expenditures locally for public inspection, and that Dunn needs to listen to the stakeholders about problems with the neighborhood councils with regards to transparency and postings, and that also a lot of the board composition are mostly property owners and homeowners. And a major thing is, like I said, with the spending, they need to go and be looking at where the money is going. And when somebody goes and tells them that there's a problem, they need to listen to the person that's going and saying that their, the neighborhood council is not spending their money the way they should. And if they would just make a list of acceptable and not acceptable expenditures, they've learned from the past what's, what's, um, acceptable and what's not, you'd have a lot of the problems that now exist, they wouldn't exist because you've already dealt with them. So please, look into the NCs being more accountable to the stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Theodore Thomas, Sr. Good to see you as always.
Good morning. I came to talk on, on behalf of Mr. Kim for General Manager for the Neighborhood Empowerment. I think he's ideal candidate for the job. I've been working with him for about a year now, and he have an open end, uh, mic for everybody. If you call him, you're able to get in touch with him. And if you pass this opportunity up for Mr. Kim, we'll be the last good man. And, uh, if you had, came to the conference this weekend, was very impressive. And it wasn't just about him, it was about all of the neighborhood councils in this, in the southern area. And we had a good turnout, and we had a lot of recommendations from that. And, uh, I really appreciate it. We're on the right track with Mr. Kim. I hope you keep him and, uh, upon him as the general manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll on the appointment. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Congratulations, and good to have you here permanently.
Thank you, Councilman.
We'll send that to the mayor for a signature. I'm sure it'll be forthcoming.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Um, we've had a request to take item 43 out of order. Is Mr. Rosendahl around? Um, why don't we wait and take up 40 just while we're waiting real quick? We have public comment cards on 40. Donna Perman is our first speaker out in Van Nuys, and then Miriam Fogler.
Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, this is Donna, Donna, um, Van Nuys. First, I want to say that I don't feel it was right for the Israeli festival to charge $10 a person even after 7:00 PM. This was waived by the city council. Charge and charge again. First, let me make a general statement about fee waivers. Sharon Brewer has the right to have her First Amendment rights to say to get rid of all fee waivers. She's intelligent, informative, and I have been getting some ideas from her. Keep on adding them up. I like it. I myself have not really said to get rid of all fee waivers because it won't happen. It might be 1 in 100, that's good. Our city is in trouble and you want to waive 31st Annual Lotus Festival, 64,963, the 18th Annual Barry Wolf Grand Prix, 9,786. Who's Barry Wolf? And I bet they'll charge on top of it. 5th Annual Peace and Unity Concert Series for 5,178, and Shepherd of the Hills Fourth of July spectacle for 17,374. The city council has no inkling how to slow down these fee waivers. I don't believe in block parties. It's usually not everyone on the block is in the party. It's a popularity contest, as bad as the neighborhood councils who get, who cut people off unless you're in the clique. I myself don't believe in neighborhood councils the way they're run. Anyway, we got to get rid of these fee waivers because our city is in trouble and the people are asking the city employees to renegotiate, yet you continue on with these fee waivers every Tuesday, every Wednesday, every Friday after the pony, dog and pony show. They should, yeah, they should only be at, uh, like for charities and things like that. This is really, I've got to be cut down. Otherwise, cut down your salary to pay for it. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Miriam Fogler, followed by Sharon Brewer.
As I said earlier, we should have a Ten Commandments up here. Thou shall not steal from the public. And that's frankly what I, what I think you're, that the, uh, the, some of these fee waivers are, that, that Israeli festival, that guy, $10 a head, that's a lot of money. And, uh, then you have the bomb scare, and it's all fenced off, very unsafe over there. And, um, naturally, he's probably, he's advertising on banners over there, too. And, uh, it was impossible for me to get in there with my scooter. I had a problem, you know, with walking too far, my feet standing too long. So it's not very good what's going on here with these, these fee waivers. You know, when you're asking, simply, it should be city council and DWP, the managers should be taking the cuts, the salaries, not the people who are paying, making only $35,000 a year. These people don't make any money to, to keep up with the cost of living and, you know, they have a right to the coloss, and, and, and they want to be likewise same pay for same work, for engineers, electricians, the same pay and same work. And, uh, so you need to curtail these fee waivers because you got people who need to feed their families and house their, their families. And this is the bottom line, this is, this is legalized stealing, and this has got to stop.
Thank you. Sharon Brewer? Ms. Brewer?
Hi, Sher- hi, Sharon Brewer, item number 40, special event fee waivers. You have 15 total, 14 with amounts, 130,255 dollars, one reimbursed, five after the fact. Again, there's a council motion that says that you must approve these events prior to the event to trigger the insurance and the departments to perform, do their job at these events. I wanted to take and speak on some of the higher ones. You have a $64,963 annual Lotus Festival, and according to the, um, motion, it says that there should be at least 70,000 people. Do the math, 64,963 divided by 70,000 people, that's 93 cents. Then you end up having the 18th Annual Barry Wolf Grand Prix, that's 9,786, they expect 500 peo- people at that event. It's sponsored by Friday's Restaurant. You end up having the 29th Anniversary of the Venice Art Walk, $14,174 on there. You have the, um, shoot, Shepherd of the Hill, Hills, $17,374. They say 60,000 people, do the math, it's 29 cents a person. Make the people that go to the event pay for it, and you suddenly do, don't have any fee waiver needed. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Uh, that closes public comment on item number 40. Uh, if anyone, did you want to speak on this item? Okay. Okay. We need to vote on this item first. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 40, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. 10 ayes. Thank you. Next item.
Item 43 called special for Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Uh, yes, Madam President. We're, we're talking about what's going on right now in the county to come up with a simple process for gay people to, to marry. Last week, we had amazing moment when the State Supreme Court on Thursday, May 15th, announced that the civil rights of gay people is in jeopardy if they don't have the right to marriage. We know the right to marriage, getting the word marriage means hospital rights, it means insurance strategies, it means inheritance, it means, uh, Social Security, it, it means all kinds of partnerships that the word marriage gives. And homosexuals are looking for basic freedoms, basic rights, uh, basic civil rights and human rights. And ironically, just for everybody to know, I was just on the phone with Diane, um, there are two people, Robin Taylor and Diane Olson. They were the ones who filed the first case on February 24th, 2004, that ended up in the State Supreme Court. They were two Los Angelinos who did it. And Diane Olson's grandfather was governor of the state of California, so there's history there. They've been together for 35 years, 20 years as close friends and 15 years as partners in a great relationship. And they filed that lawsuit. We're going to honor them here in the city council in the not-too-distant future for the historic moment they did with Gloria Alred as their attorney going forward into the courts. I got an email yesterday, "My partner, myself, and our two boys live in the Venice Canals. We are strong supporters of you, Bill, and we'd be honored if you would perform our wedding ceremony." They saw me at the West Hollywood rally and they thought it would make sense. They want to pick a date in August or September for their wedding. And so I've agreed to do that. I've already performed one marriage, it was a heterosexual marriage, and now I, I see that I might find myself also doing homosexual. That's the first openly gay guy in the history of this city to be elected in that status. It's an honor for me to be supporting my brothers and sisters for their basic civil and human rights. And I know this motion here is a, a motion encouraging the county to work out the process, make it friendly so that this can go forward. Within a month, the law will be in effect, and you're going to see thousands of Californians journeying, joining hands in, in a spirit of love, in a spirit of dignity, in a spirit of basic civil rights. And I applaud my colleagues when we put the motion before you all in the last couple of years to support gay marriage that unanimously did. So you were ahead of the curve and ahead of the courts, and we look forward to the November battle where I know the people in California will support their brothers and sisters for basic human and civil rights. Last comment, folks, just so if you don't know this, gay people don't choose to be gay. Um, you know, it, it's, it's not a preference, it's an orientation. It's one's nature. If you could determine your nature, you, you are, you know, beyond being a human. And we don't determine our nature. We accept our nature and get on with our lives, and this is an expression of support for us as human beings with basic civil rights. And thank you, Madam President, for letting me speak over the delimit. Thank you.
Not bad, only 19 seconds. Mr. Garcetti.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, um, not just for your advocacy, but for your eloquence. And it's, history has a strange way, when you read history books, it seems like it's all so easy, desegregating schools, marriage equality, women's right to vote, seems like it happened overnight. And sometimes we forget just how long and how hard these things are when they're in the midst of the battle. And you certainly have been at the front line of that end. Um, even before you came to the city council, we had a council that was supportive of the idea of equality and spoke out when it wasn't maybe as popular as now. Um, it still is not, uh, popular, but it is a decision that some brave justices decided, looking back 20, 30 years from now, people wonder how could they ever have not been on the right side of, of progress and of justice? So it was a very emotional week, I know, for so many of our constituents and so many of us. Um, and, you know, all relationships are about love and commitment. They're tough, they take work, they require diligence, they require the opening of one's hearts. But the institution of marriage is something different. It's not static, it has changed significantly over time. And I always say, the more people that are willing to try that commitment and to, to accept that challenge, the better, uh, we can be. Married women in the past used to be the legal property of their husbands. Asian immigrants were prohibited from marrying each other. Interracial marriages, we know, were prohibited by anti-masogeneration laws. But a strong institution and a strong belief accommodates social and cultural shifts to get to the core of what it is, a commitment between two people. And granting, um, the LGBT community the right to marry is in some ways the evolution simply of human rights. Partnerships should be seen as equal under the law regardless of the gender of people in them. I think so many of us have gotten requests from our constituents, our neighbors, and others to perform these wedding ceremonies. Some of us had done them before official, uh, state law has passed, but now we have the state law. And even for those who might be against this, this is state law. And so today, we're actually calling on the county to implement, and to implement quickly what we know is the state law now and what our Supreme Court has decided. People who love each other and care about fairness and justice can, can fight for the equality of all people. And, you know, there was among some people who were worried about quote-unquote gay marriage, that somehow this would endanger the, uh, institution of straight people getting married. I don't think that there's been one single straight divorce linked to gay marriage in Massachusetts. Or if it is, it probably should have been linked to because that person probably was in the wrong sort of marriage. But there's not been any, um, any shaving away, there has not been any diminution of people who are different genders' ability to commit to one another, to make that same strength and love commitment that other people do. And allowing same-sex couples to marry will only expand that circle, not in some way disintegrate it. So I ask for your support, colleagues, today, and I'm proud this opinion puts our state at the forefront of history. We'll look back on this time very proudly.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. 10 ayes. That item's been approved. Thank you. Next order.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused to leave at 12:30 on June 11th for city business. A motion is required.
Yes, Ms. Hahn moves, Ms. Perry seconds.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused to leave at 11:30 on June 3rd for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Weiss moves, uh, Mr. Smith seconds.
And Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused August 12th, 13th, and 15th for personal business. That meets council policy.
He will be excused.
That clears the desk.
Thank you. Any announcements today, colleagues? Any announcements? If not, I'd like to make an announcement. We have, um, tomorrow morning, an 818 Mobility Summit in the West San Fernando Valley. If you're interested in attending, you can visit our, our website, www.lacity.org, and go to Councilmember Grul. We encourage you to participate. We will, doing that in coordination with local businesses and metro. Mr. Garcetti, you had an announcement?
Sorry, journey motions.
Journey motion, okay. Any other announcements? If not, colleagues, if you could please rise for our journey motions.
Uh, thank you so much, Madam President, and, uh, we certainly note, just as a- Thank you so much, Madam President, and we certainly note, just as a side note, the news about Senator Kennedy's brain tumor this morning as well, and pray for him and hope for his speedy recovery. He certainly has been an asset to this nation and a friend to Los Angeles. Today, I ask that we adjourn in memory of two people. One, it's very sad, Mr. Labonge and I just adjourned a week and a half ago for Robert Nudelman, who was the preservation director at Hollywood Heritage. He was found dead at his father's home in Arizona, and then less than a week later, his father passed as well. Saul Nudelman was preceded in his death by his wife, Ruth Donovan Wood Nudelman, and his sons, Mark Jonathan Nudelman and Robert Wood Nudelman. He passed away on May 15th at about 5:00 a.m. while in hospice care in Tucson, Arizona. He survived by a niece, Marilyn Greenberg, as well as another niece and three nephews. He was born August 14th, 1922, and received degrees in physics with a BA from Union College in Schenectady, New York in 1945, masters from Indiana University, and a PhD from the University of Maryland. He was a teacher, researcher, and administrator at Union College, Knox College, Naval Ordnance Laboratory, University of Michigan, IIITRI, University of Rhode Island, and most recently, the University of Arizona. He concentrated on photo electronic imaging devices and the application of such devices for imaging diagnostic medicine. He had in excess of 50 papers covering these areas, including eight co-edited or co-authored books. May Saul Nudelman rest in peace. Secondly, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Christine Glazier. Many of you remember my Deputy Beatrice Schuh, who worked here in these council chambers for many years. Her husband, Andrew Glazier, who's a city commissioner, his mother, Christine Marie Glazier, passed away. She was born in 1949 in Eagle Rock, a third-generation Angelino, grew up in Silmar and attended high school at St. Genevieve's in Granada Hills. Her first job was with the Los Angeles City Contracts Administration here. She raised three children in Studio City. She was a talented baker, dancer, actress, and musician, who loved the arts and was active at various times with the Los Angeles Arts Council, KPFK Radio, and LACMA Costume Council. Her favorite places in Los Angeles were the Huntington Gardens, La Brea Bakery, Walt Disney Music Hall, and Du Par's Restaurant in Studio City. In her 59 years, she lived away from Los Angeles for only 10 years and missed LA every second she was gone. A memorial service was held Friday, May 16th, the San Fernando Mission. May she rest in peace, and all of our thoughts go out to the Glazier family.
Yes, Mr. Labonge.
Members, as a member of council and also as a head of our Sister City program, although not a Sister City, but our hearts go out to the people of China, Senguan province of a devastating earthquake that may climb to over 50,000 people. I will be presenting a condolence to the concept on behalf of all of us, and I ask that we all adjourn in memory. This is a three-day mourning period. It just goes to remind us of the fragile nature of nature and this powerful earthquake that rocked China, and may our blessings go out to those people and the victims of that terrible incident.
Thank you, all members. Any other adjourned motions? If not, Madam, excuse me, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. The meeting's adjourned.